A salute to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. Do have a bit of an unusual piece of business to transact, and I think now is probably the appropriate place to do this. Contacted this afternoon by a board member, Mr. Mike Pierce, indicating his desire to resign from the school board. And I'll not go into the reasons. I'll let Mike take care of that for folks that are interested or need to know. But he did send a letter documenting or verifying that for us after he'd talked to both Rich and I. And I'll read that. It's fairly brief. And it says, April 27th, 2020, as of April 27th at 6:30 PM, I will be resigning from the Milton School Board. I am resigning for personal reasons. I would like to thank Rich Domon and the whole Milton School Board for the opportunity to serve with the board. I would like to thank all the staff from the Milton School District. They are second to none. And it is signed, Michael S. Pierce. So with that, I would like to offer my thanks to Mike for his service on the board. Mike's been a big help in a lot of regards and a valuable member of our board in a lot of the initiatives that we got started in the last couple of years. So with that, I would offer my thanks on behalf of the entire school board and wish him nothing but the best. And so that is all the legality that's involved. We don't have to act or accept it. It's effective upon its execution. So we technically have a vacancy as of tonight on the school board. That notwithstanding, we are going to go ahead with our agenda, which includes, first of all, the confirmation of the oath of office for our newly elected school board members, Shelley Kroll-Hankey and Michael Hoffman. And they have duly taken and sworn that oath prior to this meeting. It is notarized and attached to the board docs or to the minutes for anyone that would need to see it. So with that, they are officially seated, being this the fourth Monday in April. So we offer a hearty welcome to both Mike and Shelley and look forward to working with both of them. So that brings us up to the election of the board officers and a CISA II delegate. So we will do that in order, president, vice president, clerk, and then treasurer, and then the CISA II delegate. Okay, having said that, nominations for the office of president are open.
I'd like to nominate Joe Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. Just as a point of reference, we don't need a second for a nomination. So I've been nominated. I would accept that. Are there any other nominations for president? Second call, are there any other nominations for president? Third and final call. And if there are none, I would entertain a motion, which can do two things. We can close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Joe for president.
I make a motion that we close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Joe Martin as board president.
Okay, motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, as you just heard, to close and cast a unanimous ballot for Joe Martin as president. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Congratulations, Joe. Sorry, that's me. I now open nominations for the office of vice president.
I nominate Rick Mullin.
I nominate Rick. Would you accept it?
Yes, I do.
Rick has accepted that. Are there other nominations for the office of vice president? Second call, nominations for vice president. And third and final call, nominations for vice president. Hearing none, we do a similar motion here to close and cast a unanimous ballot for Rick. Someone makes that and seconded it.
A second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Shelley, to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Rick as vice president. All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Mullin. I would now declare open nomination for the board clerk.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Shelley Kroll-Hankey for president.
Shelley, would you accept?
Yes, sir.
Are there other nominations for board clerk? Second call, nominations for board clerk. And third, final call, any other nominations for board clerk? Hearing none, if someone still moves, we can close and cast unanimous ballot for Shelley Kroll-Hankey as board clerk.
I'll make a motion to close the nominations and cast the unanimous ballot for Shelley Kroll-Hankey for board clerk.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Shelley Kroll-Hankey to be our board clerk. All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Shelley. And I will now declare open nominations for the office of vice treasurer.
I nominate Diamond McKenna for the position of board treasurer.
Diamond, do you accept? Diamond accepts. Are there other nominations for board treasurer? Second call, nominations for board treasurer. And third and final call for other nominations for the position of treasurer on the school board. Hearing none, we can once again have a combined motion to close and cast unanimous ballot for Diamond McKenna as board treasurer.
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast the unanimous ballot for Diamond McKenna for board treasurer.
A second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Shelley, to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Diamond McKenna for treasurer. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I clear that pass. Diamond is our treasurer. Congratulations. And we have one more. Now I would open nominations for delegate representatives with CISA.
Joe, what's your responsibilities for that?
Help me a little bit. The main one is to represent us at the convention in Milwaukee where they take up resolutions on behalf of the entire CISA group. They do have periodic workshops in our local office over here in Whitewater that some board members attend. The delegate is certainly welcome to. I've not been to any CISA delegate meetings. I can't say from experience.
Mr. President, I'd like to... Excuse me, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to not...
I'd like to nominate Michael Hoffman as CISA II delegate.
And Mike, would you accept? Mike says yes. Other nominations for CISA II delegate?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Brian Quappel for the CISA II delegate.
Brian, would you accept?
Yes.
Brian says yes. Are there other nominations for CISA II delegate? And third and final call for nominations to CISA II delegate? Hearing none, we can entertain a motion to close nomination.
And then we'll do a ballot?
Yep. Yep, we'll do a paper ballot and we'll close nominations. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
I'll second that.
Motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, to close nomination for CISA II delegate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two candidates. You've got a paper ballot, write their name, and then we'll close and see who our CISA II delegate is. Rick and Diamond, seconded.
Free a ballot? You're doing?
Well, Kim is counting those. I want to take this opportunity. It's a little chaotic with some folks on site and some not. At our previous meeting was the last one that our outgoing board members were able to join us. And I was remiss in not publicly thanking Karen Hall for her service to the school board. So I would like to take this opportunity to do that. We would certainly hope to get both Tom Westrich and Karen back to a future meeting in person and properly acknowledge their years of service on the school board. But in lieu of that, I want to take a moment to publicly say how much we enjoyed working with Karen, how helpful and valuable she was to the board, and make sure we get that noted. So until we can get here in person, thanks, Karen, and we'll see you soon.
Okay, I've counted the ballots, and Mike Hoffman is elected to CISA II delegate. I have a vote of 42.
Thank you. And congratulations, Mike. Okay. Thank you for coming with me. I'm a little laborious, but we've got our office slate and our delegate for next year. And back to the agenda, action on the agenda. Mr. Domon, are you aware of any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Brian, to approve our agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Action on the minutes, which are attached to your board docs.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on April 13th, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Rick, to approve our minutes from the previous board meeting. If there are no questions on those, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are approved. Action on vouchers. And there will be a motion attached. We don't have a treasurer, a previous treasurer on site, so someone will need to pick that up for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fund 10 vouchers totaling $122,097.68 and Building Fund 49 vouchers totaling $1,546,008.18, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Rick, to approve the vouchers, as you just heard. Are there any questions on those? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the vouchers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Vouchers are approved. Public participation. Has anyone indicated a desire to?
Nothing on the online form and nothing on the sign-up form in the...
Okay, and we will move past that. Next, there's a public hearing. Mrs. Domon, do you think I need to read the disclaimer? Rupt in a public hearing that we're going to ask for a waiver? I'm hearing you twice, and I'm having a hard time, so could you just... Do I need to read this declaration in the public hearing?
No, it doesn't need to be read. It's publicized in the public document in board docs, so it does not need to be read out loud.
Okay.
And this sign-up form was also for the public hearing?
Sure.
Comment handle, Dan, or how does the public hearing?
So, so folks know, we're going to later on ask for a waiver for the DPI regulated hours of instruction. And part of that component is to come... We must conduct a public hearing. So we're doing that in conjunction with tonight's meeting. And folks would have had a chance to weigh in on that if they had chose. Okay, we'll move past that. Superintendent, update. Rich.
Yeah, there is a document that I'll... I won't read through the whole document, but I'll highlight some different things. I wanted to share with the board and the community some of the different things that are happening across the district in lieu of our current situation across the country and actually across the world. We've been working, actually since February, as a district to make plans. And with the emergence of March 17th, the emergency order from Governor Inver's, the initial Safer at Home Act, we have used our preparation and quickly implemented our virtual learning program, a free breakfast and lunch program for all children 18 and under in our district, and engaged in a network of mental and emotional health support for our district's students, staff, and families. We've also utilized our staff of educators and support professionals to put these into action. We responded to student community needs as they arise and provided what normalcy is possible for students. And there's a few different areas that I want to highlight. We've continued virtual learning since mid-March and will be continuing it for the remainder of this school year. That allows for continued educational growth for our students, also maintains those important connections between school district staff and their peers and connections with students. Different grade levels have different guidelines and expectations, but the lessons focus on core concepts. Make sure the experience is as effective as possible. The feedback has been overall positive on the virtual learning so far. Parents have expressed appreciation and enthusiasm for the virtual learning. Upon the implementation, we understood that not all families had access to high-speed internet or to tech devices. So our support teams have connected families with solutions, including providing Wi-Fi hotspots and distributing iPads to our kindergarten through third-grade students. If you recall, our fourth grade through 12th graders have devices that they individually have available, whereas our kindergarten through third grade have classroom sets of iPads. So we didn't have to purchase additional iPads, but we did distribute those classroom sets out to students so that they have access to those at home. That rapid transition from the traditional in-class learning environment to the virtual learning, it asked a lot of our staff, our students, and parents and families. We've been really impressed with the flexibility that everyone involved has shown. And the virtual learning, although we have had some hiccups along the way, we've reacted to concerns that parents have had, and I feel that we're in a good place to continue the school year with the virtual learning. In our nutrition program, the district nutrition staff, the One Apple Lunch Bunch, the Milton Food Pantry, and generous donor support have allowed us to provide reliable access to free breakfast and lunch to families with children during this need. The nutrition program is open to all children 18 and under who want to participate. So they don't have to be members of our school district. They don't have to be in 4K already. Anyone from birth through age 18 is able to participate. Our social workers and educators have worked together, reaching out to families if we know that they have a resource and security to connect them with the program. Go Right Way has helped provide transportation. Meals are available for pickup at some of our schools. And then also, families that wouldn't be able to participate in the drive-through pickup portion. As of last Friday, we've served over 1,650 meals each week. And as the closure continues, we're going to keep reaching out through teachers, administrators, and district communications to make sure that all families are aware of the program and taking part in it if they'd like. Some may not have needed the resource when the closure began, but may find themselves in more need in the upcoming weeks as this goes on. I also want to highlight some of the things that our student services team is doing to help meet the social, emotional, and mental health support of students. To continue in that effort during these very anxious and challenging times, our school counselors and school psychs are included in the virtual learning program. The student services team are giving their energy to reach out directly to families to make sure no student is unsafe or without necessities during these times. Our school counselors are involved by providing lessons and exercises that are being sent out to students along with the core curriculum so that we can continue those necessary connections between students and staff. And we want to make sure that if there are any students or parents, family members who feel the need for any type of assistance, to be sure to reach out to us so that we can help. Our program continues. Thanks to our district staff, our facilities and programming needs have not reduced. So in addition to the virtual learning, nutrition program, and student services programs, they're only possible because of our phenomenal district staff across all of our schools and across our district departments. Since the initial closure back in March, our custodial team has been deep cleaning and disinfecting our district buildings to make sure staff and students are able to return to a safe working and learning environment. We'll hear more later on in the board meeting, more specifics about the referendum work, but that continues during the closure. We're able to move some timelines forward now that we know that students are not going to be back in the schools this year. And our paraprofessionals and building and grounds crew have done an outstanding job of paving the way to prepare the buildings for these next phases of construction. We're still working on some different milestone events, and I'll share a little bit more about that a little bit later too. But our staff is actively planning alternative and virtual events for some of our milestone events, like graduation, senior awards night. They won't look the same as they normally would if we weren't in the pandemic. But details on those events will be shared out with families in the very near future. And we are also reviewing performance of our budget, like we do every year at this time. And we'll know more as we close out the budget in June and July, as far as how the budget performed this year. We are anticipating some savings, but we're also aware that there are some increases in costs in a few areas too. So we're continuing to monitor that, and we'll be bringing that information to the board as we close out the budget in June and July. So I would welcome any questions or thoughts from the board. There are a few more specifics that I'm going to be sharing in the next agenda item that are more specific to the Safer at Home Act and the Badger Bounce Back Plan, some of the more specific COVID-19 areas.
Okay, any questions for Rich so far?
I have one question. So graduation has been decided that it's virtual?
There is a team that's working on graduation. Principal Bill Horn and the admin team have a graduation planning team made up of staff members and administrators at the high school. And we're finalizing plans on that, and we're going to get information out by the end of this week to people.
I got like six phone calls on Sunday of parents saying that they've been told that graduation's virtual and what the conversation was at our level about it, and I had no idea what the conversation was. So I would just, if there's like planning, if we could get an email about it, so when people reach out, we can be a little bit more prepared, because I felt really blindsided on Sunday evening. I don't know who shared it or how it got shared out, but it blew up on Sunday by a group of parents.
Yeah, Mr. Bill Horn had a message last night. He sent out, like, I think it's a daily or a weekly thing he sends to the kids. And we're finalizing conversations on that. Looking at a virtual graduation on the scheduled day is one of the options that we're looking at. But we'll find out, plans for that haven't been finalized yet, and we'll be sending those out by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Okay, if you can segue right to the next agenda item, Rich.
Yeah, the next agenda item, the COVID update, there's another document available in board docs. I waited to put that in until today because this, a lot of this information is changing on a day-to-day basis. But this is current as of today. And I wanted to review a few things on the Safer at Home order and the Badger Bounce Back Plan. So, and then detail a little bit about what that means to us as a school district. Emergency Order Number 28, the Safer at Home order, was issued on April 16th. And I included some specific language from that order. I won't read through that, but it details information about school buildings across the state of Wisconsin being closed for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. And it does give us the ability to continue with distance learning or virtual learning and to be used for essential government functions and food distribution. So I think an important part of that message is that school is continuing, but the school buildings are closed through the end of the school year, which has been defined as through June 30th. So this emergency order has detailed that we are not able to use our school buildings for any type of pupil instruction or extracurricular activities through the end of June. Again, we can continue with virtual learning, meals, and other essential services. And while doing that, we have a requirement to maintain the social distancing requirements that are listed there and that we all are familiar with. The Badger Bounce Back Plan that was... That came from Emergency Order Number 31 last week on April 20th, details a couple of different things as related to schools. There are different phases that we'll go to as we're moving from our current status into, back to, I guess, what we would call normal status. Currently, we're in the Safer at Home status. And then upcoming, there will be three different phases. Specific to schools, Phase 1 would allow schools to operate with gatherings of under 10 people. In Phase 2, it would allow schools to operate with gatherings under 50 people. And then when we get to Phase 3 as a state, we would resume all business operations and gatherings, including schools, with some protective measures in place for vulnerable populations. So it really isn't until we get to Phase 3 that we are back to what we would consider normal in schools. And we aren't certain how quickly we'll move through those phases as a state. There are some requirements built into the emergency order that detail when we would move from our current status into Phase 1, and then from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and then to Phase 3. Needs to be some requirements in place that include testing, tracing, and tracking for people that test positive for the COVID virus. There needs to be personal protective equipment in place and available, healthcare capacity available. And then there's what's known as gating criteria, which is a 14-day downward trend in influenza-like cases, COVID-19-like cases, and positive tests, and the ability at hospitals to test and treat all positive cases. So once those things are in place, then we would move from our current status... So once those things are in place, then we would move from our current status into Phase One. And if that happens again while in Phase One, then into Phase Two and likewise in Phase Three. In the next section, I talk about what impact those things have on on our operations as a school district. And first one of those is around funding. We've had a lot of discussions about funding, both for the current year and for the upcoming fiscal year. The Wisconsin Legislature is considering funding changes for next year based on decreased state revenue collection. We've heard, at least anecdotally, that they're anticipating a fairly significant budget shortfall at the state level because of the economic downturn. And we'll need to consider their revisions to the statewide budget, which may impact revenue for schools. Because of that, we're using multiple scenario budgeting for next year. We're looking at what we will do for our budget if we do receive the full amount that's expected from next year. That's based on the previous biennium of a three hundred dollar per student increase for us for next year. But in addition to planning for that, we're also planning if that amount is reduced or if that amount is is not there at all. And it has a pretty significant impact on our budget. That three hundred dollars per student is approximately a million dollars in increased revenue for us as a school district. So as we're planning, we're keeping all of those things in mind until we get more details on our revenue for next year. We have a desire to have a balanced budget for next year, and being able to do that means we have to know what those revenues are going to be. Because of that, we've paused on salary discussions for next year until we have more information on our revenues. Another piece of our of our revenues, though, is the federal stabilization funds in what was known as the CARES Act. And the CARES Act does have specific funding available for states to dole out to states for use in their schools. And they those funds can be used for COVID-related expenses. And some examples would be technology to enable virtual learning, personal protective equipment. We will need to replenish our supplies of those things because a lot of those things we have helped out some of our neighbors, medical providers, law enforcement, with some donations of those supplies when they've been in need. Those can be used for student remediation services for students who who need some some remediation in their in their curriculum. Those funds will be available retroactively back to expenses that started in March of two thousand twenty and available through September of two thousand twenty-two. So it'll be a pretty lengthy timeframe for us to be able to spend those dollars. We haven't heard specifics yet on what amount that will be. We should have more details by the end of this week, but we're waiting for the federal government to get in more specific information out to the states and then for the State Department of Public Instruction to get that information out to individual districts. There is a clause in in the CARES Act that talks about keeping staff and vendors hired to the greatest extent practicable. And the definition that we've received on that is that we we need to, in order to be eligible for full funding of the CARES Act, we should keep our staff employed to the best of our ability. And we've been told that we must have a reasonable explanation for any layoffs and that the reason for those layoffs can't be to save money this year to be used for next year. So the intent of that CARES Act is is to get funding out to schools to be able to allow schools, school districts, to keep staff on. And we and we've had some of those discussions with our HR committee earlier. Just a couple of things on graduation. I don't know that it's any different than what I shared before, but the Milton High School team is working out the specific details of what graduation will look like. We will need to stay within the guidelines of the both the Safer At Home Act and the Badger Bounce Back Plan. We will hopefully get more information out by the end of this week to students and families on that. We also are having some discussions about summer school. And because of the the order from the state government, we aren't allowed to bring students in on site at least through June thirtieth and potentially longer than that, depending on how quickly we move through the phases. And it's safe to bring students back in. So we're planning virtual-only summer school through the month of June. And that'll be a combination of some some typical online classes, some credit recovery for students, some remediation classes for students. And then we, again, are planning multiple scenarios for July and August for summer school. One scenario will be if it's completely virtual. If we're still, if we haven't entered Phase One yet, we can't bring even ten students in. So we would need to continue to offer those offerings virtually. If we're in Phase One, we could have some virtual options, but we could also bring in groups of students as long as those groups of students are under ten students at a time. And if we're in Phase Two, we could bring in groups of students up to fifty students at a time. So we are looking at multiple scenarios, trying to work out how to best plan that with with plenty of unknowns. And the word that we're receiving is that it's most likely throughout the summer going to be virtual-only or bringing small groups moving into Phase One. But that depends on how rapidly we we see some improvement in the in the number of cases and the availability of tests and personal protective equipment. So we have a team that's working on what summer school will look like. It's it's difficult with a lot of the uncertainty, but our plan at least through June is to continue with some virtual learning for for students. And then we are beginning some planning for the start of next school year. So the fall of two thousand twenty, when we bring students back in September. Again, there's a lot of uncertainty depending on what phase we're in and how we've moved through those phases. And we are beginning planning multiple scenarios on what that can and will look like in the fall, depending on virtual learning or being able to bring all students in or some combination between those things. So there's a lot of planning going on. There's still plenty of uncertainty as we're making our plans, and we're just going to have to remain flexible in our work. And our staff has done an incredible job of not only providing the virtual learning, but also starting to do some planning for for the upcoming year and for summer.
Oh, thanks, Rich. That was a lot of ground to cover. Does anybody have any questions specific to what Rich went over? I think most of you can can see how how involved some of the administrative stuff is in the situation that we've got. So thanks for the update. Okay, let us transition here a little bit to a regular item on our agenda, referendum. And joining us is Mike Huffman to share with us some of what he has for updates.
Okay, thank you. First, congratulations and hello to your two new board members. We had a chance to have a video conference, I believe it was last week, just sort of an update or rather a general description of the project and where we are up till now. So this is my typically I'm presenting to the board twice a month, but once a month I do produce a report that is included in your board packet. So hopefully you've seen that, and I will expand on that a little bit and be happy to take any questions. So a construction update. Likely have seen the pictures in our report. But things have gone well. It's actually been a pretty good spring for construction, weaving in and out between the rain. But actually, the rain has not been as significant this spring as it has been in some past years. But over at East Elementary School, things have progressed quite well there. We're essentially have an enclosed envelope. Windows aren't in, but there are temporary protection in the windows. Quite a bit of work that has opened up there with respect to the mechanical contractors. So a lot of the overhead piping and a lot of the electrical work is is now in place. And then, of course, we've all of those exterior envelope items that I talked about with the roof, the watertight membrane, and then finally, the brick veneer have been installed there at East. As you jump over to West, it's behind a bit. They have completed the exterior waterproofing barrier and have just started the brick. Just started it last Friday when I was out to see them start on their corners. All looks good. As we jump over to Harmony, it's another step behind in the process, but the the structure is up. And I believe the waterproofing crew has has made their way over to Harmony now. And then finally, out at Consolidated, that's the the last one to get started. And they have accomplished the excavation and the footing and foundation work for the small addition on the front of the school. So good to have that one underway. All in all, the Cullen and subcontractors have adhered to the schedule there. We've certainly had some opportunities to get in for the interior work in those schools. It is actually ahead of schedule, so that's good news. We also have approved an order for furniture for the elementary schools. And we're talking about an installation date in early August for that. So all all evidence seems to point towards success on the schedule for the elementary schools. As we look at middle school, this morning, the battle was delivered there, and you'll see excavation work commence later this week. I did stop out and meet the field staff that is managing that project. I met them last week and talked about how they're going to be proceeding. So good to have that project get started. If you will recall, this one has bounced around in terms of our starting schedule. At one point early on, there was a start point middle school that would have been disruptive to a part of this school year. And we said, oh, we don't need to do that. Let's delay the start until after your school year. And now, of course, we've gone back, and we're starting early. So I think that's that'll wind up being good news for the middle school. And then, of course, the high school, you approved an early work package to start out there with the stem wing. And that excavation work has accomplished accomplished retention to support the soil on the existing building while they as they move towards constructing the new addition there. They'll say administratively, you're really quite as additional crews are on to the elementary school. We have a construction meeting with each of them. I listed several of the construction meetings I've attended in your board packet. But that's as we bring on firewall dollars, acoustical ceiling installers, metal panel installers. We have a construction meeting with them to talk about site safety and then how to facilitate their work around the contractor already on the site. We also have our Thursday progress. So this takes it to the project manager level for each trade that's involved. That has up till this point focused entirely on the elementary school. And as of this Thursday, we will end the elementary school meeting and go right into our discussion of the middle school. Also administratively, we have accepted the bids, or rather, we've received the bids for the high school. I can tell you, we had a good bid day. We will come to you on May eleventh with the total results of that bid day and will, at that time, be requesting your approval to proceed with the balance of the scope of work at the high school. Today, we have yet another, I'd call it an early work package. So in order for us to keep the progress moving at the high school, but still have the time we need to evaluate the rest of the bids, we have teased out the pieces of work that need to get started right away. And so that there's a notice to proceed in your package for that work. That work amounts to four million dollars, and it is, in general, site, site work, site utility work, site preparation. So at the pool, we have we have to bolster the bearing capacity of the soil in that area, and that's being done with geopiers. We're actually on a grid. They will drill holes and ram aggregate down into those holes. And that allows us to accommodate the footings and foundations with the somewhat diminished bearing capacity that naturally exists on that that portion of the work. We also have included in their procurement of long lead items. So certainly with a pool, with a big addition to the high school, and then significant renovations throughout, we have mechanical equipment. We have steel, we have rebar, even the concrete and many other items that we need to procure to accommodate the lead times for those items. And so we are, we have peeled that out and asked for your approval to proceed with that scope of work. Now, it gets a little bit a little bit complicated with respect to the final guaranteed maximum price amendment that you will eventually sign with JP Cullen. And that is that will be as we get to May eleventh. So the early bid package that you already approved for the high school, and if you're to approve this one, allows them to get started. And then contractually, those two will be rolled into the final guaranteed maximum price for the high school. And that will then become an amendment to JP Cullen's contract. So essentially, this is a placeholder, and and that will essentially go away and be replaced by the total guaranteed maximum price when we get to May eleventh. A couple of things I wanted to discuss with you that you may have heard about. We had a quality concern over at East Elementary School with respect to the exterior brick. So that brick is a, it's called a veneer brick, which means it does not contribute to the structure of the building. It is purely the aesthetic component of the building. It's outside of the air vapor and thermal barrier. In fact, there's a slight air gap between your waterproofing, your insulation, and then finally, that brick veneer. So that brick veneer went up that is a basically a two-brick color over at East, which matches the existing brick. And it's really a remarkably good match. So that's the good news. But we had a pattern that formed as they laid up the brick on one particular elevation. And help me, Stephen, that's the south elevation. Thank you. As you look at the south elevation, there is evident of what we'll call sort of a zigzag pattern or almost like an arrow pointing in one direction. And another plane of that same elevation is another arrow, and it almost looks like it's pointing you towards an interior corner of the building. It's it's really quite odd. And it, as you get further away from the building, it becomes even more evident. So if you were to drive by the building half a block away, you will know exactly what I'm talking about. So that was identified. We took a look at it. Stephen and I met on Friday, kind of discussed our opinions between the the two of us, talked to Rich about it, and agreed that we would meet with JP Cullen there this morning. We did that. They brought a number of people out to look at it. We had a very good discussion. We looked at a couple of different solutions as to how to treat that wall. And in the end, we decided to require the most tried and true fix to that, which is to take that portion of the brick wall down. And they're able to do that from And they're able to do that from control joint to control joint. So if you know how brick is laid up, it 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 has a tooth-in pattern, but at some point, you you have an expansion or control joint where bricks side by side are not toothed together. So we would go from control joint to control joint, remove all that brick, and then lay it back up. And that would happen in two locations on that south elevation. Appreciate JP Cullen's approach to it. They said at the outset of our meeting today that although we were going to discuss a couple of different options as to how to remedy that, no, neither of the option would cost the school district anything. And they would go with what our requirement was at the end of the day. So I think we will have resolution to that. Otherwise, it's a very attractive brick. And as I said, sometimes when you're marrying an existing brick to an addition of the building, sometimes you just want to go with something completely different, so you don't have a near miss. Here, we've gone with a match, and I think it's a remarkable match. So happy with that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this morning, we had some members of the Steamfitters Local 601 Union. That's a 601 is Milwaukee. Milwaukee local for Steamfitters. They were onsite today, and they had a a sign out in front of the district office. And they have taken exception to a subcontractor that JP Cullen has engaged for the middle school. That subcontractor is North American Mechanical, Inc. They're an HVAC mechanical contractor. And they are a non-union contractor. I did stop out and speak with the people that were out there today, had a very good conversation with them, always very polite. And they expressed their concern that that the non-union contractors pay a different wage than what the union contractors pay. They also expressed a concern that, which I'm not certain is valid, and it would take a little research to find out, but their concern was that North American Mechanical is not a local provider. You, if if we were to dig into that a little bit more, we would, we would try to find out who lives in the district. So their their concern was about people that live in the district. Now, as as we look, we actually had pretty good participation on the mechanical bids for the middle school project. We had a number of union contractors, and we had two non-union, two or three non-union contractors that participated in it. And certainly, there were union contractors that are are absolutely not local. Butters Fetting is a very good contractor out of the Milwaukee area. They participated in our process here. Absolutely appreciate their participation in the bid. I said they are a good contractor, but they certainly are not local, and I don't, I'm not sure how that argument would play in had Butters Fetting been our our low-bid contractor. But I'll I'll leave that to you to see if we need to explore that anymore. North American Mechanical was the low-bid contractor on bid day. They did not become the low-bid contractor through any evaluation of the bids. They were open the bid low-bid contractor. We did exclude one of the bids that we received for the middle school. We excluded it because it was because it had a lot of exclusions. Sorry. There were a lot of things that were requirements of the scope of work that were stricken from their bid. So we dropped that and and did not, well, we we dropped that bid. That happened to be one of the other non-union contractors that we that we dropped. So I think I'll pause at that point. Any, I've covered a lot of ground there. Any questions on either the construction progress, the administrative features, or those two issues that I I discussed at the end there?
I just had a question. When you're talking about the maximum with the maximum new amendment with Colin, was that costly because of material costs and things like that? That will have amendment or could be down or could be more because of that? Materials right now and whatever.
So so real basics of the the A133 contract that's signed with, there's an American Institute for Architects 133 contract signed with JP Cullen as the construction manager at risk. So you inherit to that process is you sign them up on a contract, and then later you amend that contract with a guaranteed maximum price. So there's nothing unique about this. It's just that is what happens. Once they receive all the bids and you approve them, they give you a guaranteed maximum price. So you are always at risk in that process of the fluctuations in the market until the point that we ink the guaranteed maximum price. So the contractor, their risk is mitigated as we get more and more bids. And and so when we get those bids in and we approve them, they can put a price out there that you can agree with, and on we go, and that is the price moving forward. You're no longer subject to any material issues or or the market of the the bidding environment. That answer your question?
I had just asked you too about what we were talking about the bids, and it was just one question I brought up over your meeting the other day was just the transparency of the bids. Once the bidding process is done with each project, are we being transparent? Who got the bid and just what the bids were after post? You know, accepting them or whatever. And we might kind of talk to that point the other day, too. So.
Yeah, one important feature I'd I'd like to remind you of, and I did point this out with the gentleman that I I met with this morning out on the street. In addition to the fact that when JP Cullen is bidding on the work and other subcontractors are bidding against them, that those bids come to my company. In addition to that, we participate in the bid opening process for all the other bids. So all all the other bids don't come strictly to my company. They do come to JP Cullen as your construction manager. JP Cullen is not bidding on those scopes of work. They gather all of those bids, and we go and participate in that bid opening process. So we see when a bid comes in, and the most likely scenario, the the most prominent scenario, if is if you have a two o'clock bid opening, bids will come in starting at about 10 o'clock in the morning, and there'll be this massive flurry of them that come close to two o'clock. This is not unlike your school environment, probably, where lots of kids are like my son, and they turn things in at the last possible moment. So a a big flurry of activity comes in as we get close to two o'clock. So we will see opening of the bid. Now, sometimes it's literal, having an envelope. Sometimes it's coming in across a fax machine. Yes, they do use fax machines. And and we see what that number is. Now, that number isn't necessarily the same number that we're going to come to you and seek approval on. So that's that's this whole period after bid day where the bids are evaluated. But it is important to know that my company sees that bid day number. Now, if something changes on that bid day number, time to the time we come and request approval from you. I need to know. Why did it change? The answer should be, we looked at the bids and they forgot to include a payment of performance bond. We looked at the bids and they didn't catch the indoor component of concrete work versus all of the outdoor components of concrete work, things like that. Home improvement bids, make sure you got good apples apples bids. Everybody has a scope of work. But it is important to know that I know what the starting bid number is, and if there is a discrepancy, I have to know what that discrepancy is.
I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign the notice to proceed for JP Cullen to proceed with select work packages and initiate the procurement process for long lead time materials in an amount not to exceed $4 million.
I'll second that.
So having said that, I'll do a voice vote. All in favor of that motion that's on the table, please say goodbye or say hi. That motion clearly passes. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Helfler.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, moving down, number three is Human Resources Committee report. Discussion and possible action on support staff group continuation of compensation agreement of 2019 to 2020. Who's taking lead on this?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll share some details. We have our our HR director, Chris Tukendorf, that can can share some things and and as the only current member of the HR committee, Diamond can can share her thoughts as we go through also. There is a document that that details or memo that details the the information, and it really in a nutshell, is is looking for board approval to continue to employ our staff and continue to employ and and pay our support staff to place them on an on-call status for the rest of the school year and to allow myself as superintendent to act on behalf of the board with regard to any work assignments, leave, and other employment matters that arise during the health emergency. So some some background information on that, we previously had brought information to both the HR committee and the board. On April 1st, the board passed a resolution to continue to employ and pay our support staff through May 1st. With the understanding that at that time, the initial safer-at-home order had schools across the state of Wisconsin closed through the end of April, or April 24th, I should say. Now that that's been extended through the rest of the school year, we know that students won't be coming back, but we are continuing to operate as a school district. And there's a few bullet points there in the discussion that I want to talk through. We're we're estimating that the stabilization funds to be around $200,000, but again, we haven't received our our notice of exactly what amount that will be. The eligibility for those funds is tied to the continued payment of employees. Again, that that statement about shall be to the to the greatest extent practicable, continuing to pay employees and contractors during this period of time. The state requires us to report the number of people laid off in a report to the Department of Public Instruction in November, along with the reasons that they were laid off. Employees less likely to have their normal work available are paraprofessionals, and we have a a total of 98 paraprofessionals. You can see the breakdown, 59 are full-time, 39 are part-time. And our nutrition team, a total of 31 employees, 10 of them full-time, 21 of them part-time. Employees would have the option of signing the advance pay waiver, the the April 1st plan that the board approved, and we've been, we've had some employees do that. But if any employees choose not to sign that waiver, then they would be eligible for unemployment. If they choose not to, if we if we move forward with a plan to pay people now with an expectation that they will work later, we would need them to sign the waiver to allow us to do that. Employees would have a right to not sign that, and then if they didn't sign it and we didn't have work for them, they'd be eligible for unemployment payments. Those unemployment payments would continue through September for any employees that do go on unemployment. Employees unemployment wouldn't be eligible for continued employer-funded health and dental insurance, and recent changes to the FMLA may not be available to all staff who don't have work. And again, because although all students are not on-site, we continue to operate as a district, we're providing work opportunities when we can. Most of our support staff are filling their regular hours, but we do have times when we don't have enough hours for all work staff. And the different options are laid out toward the bottom of that document. Again, now that we know that school buildings will be closed for the remainder of school year, we have to revisit this issue, determine a course of action. There's really three different options, and they each have their own set of consequences. We could lay off any staff who do not have work available. We could continue providing the advanced pay waiver option for those that choose it, or we could place our staff on an on-call status, pay staff their regular wage, and continue to offer work opportunities as those work opportunities are available. Again, the consequences to each of those, I talked a little bit about already, but I'd be open to answer any questions, or Chris Tukendorf or or Diamond could add anything from the things that we discussed with the HR committee. But those are different options, and based on that information, it's our administrators' belief that the best option is to continue to pay staff, continue to work, offer work opportunities, and have all staff on an on-call basis for the remainder of this school year. Anything that that Diamond, if you'd like to add to that, or Chris Tukendorf or Kerry Bradley that you'd like to add, or any questions or thoughts from board members?
I do not have anything to add to what Rich had said.
I have a quick question about on-call status. So does that, does that mean that support staff, let's say they normally work eight hours, or let's say six hours a day, and there's four hours of work for them a day, and they would work those four hours and get paid for those four hours? What did, I guess my question is, what exactly does on-call mean?
Yeah, on-call status is if an employee, we'll use the example that that Mike shared, if if someone if their work assignment is six hours a day, and we only have, if we have six hours of work for them, then they would work those six hours and get paid for those six hours. But it really is is keeping people whole, I guess is another way to describe it. So if a person is their normal work is six hours and you only have four hours of work for them that day, they would work the four hours, but they would still get paid for six hours. With the on-call status, rather than using a waiver and banking those hours for down the road, because employees would have the ability now moving forward to deny that waiver and go on unemployment, which which potentially would cost the district more money than having them, just having them be on paid for for their normal hours, we're recommending that on-call status.
In addition, we talked about this at the last meeting. I'll make sure that I'm not muted here first. Sorry. I'm good. At the last meeting, we talked about this a little bit, but in addition to staffing on on-call status, their assignments might not necessarily reflect what their normal job duties are. So for example, now that we know students can't come back into the buildings until June 30th, if not later than that, we can start taking down classrooms, which usually is a different population of people that are doing that, but we can utilize people to come in that maybe we're doing, working in food services, maybe now they're helping move a classroom in East or taking down a classroom. So where it might not be their typical working hours and their job description to match that, it's kind of that other duties as assigned. And with our ability to foresee these And with our ability to foresee these changes with the government's order, we're able to utilize people to do things like that that we didn't intend to be able to do, trying to get them as many hours as we can to make it whole.
And is that made clear to the employees that, so a food service person might be, let's say, moving classrooms? I mean, just is that clear to to the employees?
Yes. That portion isn't to change and how we operate since school buildings have employees, you can utilize some staff to work in other areas as needs arise, as needs arise, and with their ability to complete those tasks. As an example, the diamond chair is a good example. We're looking at a plan where if there are a lot of student materials that are still in the schools, their families, they're coming back up, so we can put different things in for the summer. And we've shared with some other districts plans for that. Sorry.
All right. I was on, I was on mute there, so I'm going to start over with that. And I was on when I, was I on when I answered Mike's question earlier?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Then I must have muted while Diamond was talking and didn't reply to that, but it's but it's a, Diamond's example of the different work that we have available for people and whether employees are alert to the possibility of working in a different area than what their normal work is, is something that we have had those discussions with employees, their supervisors are talking to them on a regular basis and monitoring their, both the work that they do and the work, the hours that they work. And the example was around picking up some student materials and then looking at kind of a bag-it-and-bag-it model, where we have staff come in and place student materials that are in their lockers or in their desks in a bag. We put the student's name on it, and then we have kind of a drive-through system for families to pull up and and pick that up. A plan where we'd be able to maintain social distancing, make sure everyone is safe, but also get materials back to students for the summer, and also collect some materials from students that they have at home that will need to collect, especially from mainly from seniors, collecting those materials.
Okay. Any other questions? It's an action item, potentially is first.
I'll make a motion to for to provide continued employment and payment support staff in our on-call status for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Furthermore, leave the superintendent may act on behalf of the board with regard to work assignments, leave, and other employment matters that arise during the health emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Diamond, seconded by Ryan. Is there any questions on that motion?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So not trying to be micromanagement or anything like that, but just want to know what I'm voting for. The the last phrase in there that says, and other employment matters that arise, kind of vague, well, I shouldn't say vague, it's very broad, and so I'm just wondering what that includes.
Yeah. For the people who aren't looking at that document, the the last second sentence of the motion was, the superintendent may act on behalf of the board with regard to work assignments, leave, and other employment matters that arise during the health emergency. And that, because the health emergency at times changes from day to day, and it doesn't correspond with our board meetings, it gives me the ability, if if there is something that happens before our next board meeting, and we need to make adjustments to to it based on that, an example may be if maybe one of our staff members comes down with COVID, and they've been in a school, and we need to close that building down until there's been a deep clean, and we need to make some adjustments because of that. We definitely would inform the board of that and bring that to the next board meeting for discussion, but it gives me the ability to make those decisions without, it gives me the authority to make those decisions without having to bring that to the board prior to making that decision.
I think Chris had a good example of the different changes of laws with FMLA with this part, with the different fender versus state versus unemployment change, you know, with benefits, and it seems like just kind of rolodex of changes. Maybe that was true there, too.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's another good example, and it really is due to the uncertain nature of of what the next, the next two months between now and the end of June will look like. And it isn't any any attempt to to make any decisions without keeping the board informed, but it gives us the flexibility to address any types of issues that that could come up in between board meetings without having to hold a special board meeting. So it's a good, good question, and and thanks for giving me the opportunity to provide that clarity.
And just to make sure my understanding is correct, I think I got that. So it'd all be operational, but anything that's going to impact the budget or finances or anything, that'd be something to draw up to the board and approve on if?
There is a possibility that it could be. I don't want to see that there is nothing that could impact the budget, but because of the uncertainty of what could happen, I mean, if we had to close down one of our schools and bring in some deep cleaning, there would be some cost involved in that. I think that we have enough savings from the things with COVID that we have some wiggle room for small things within our budget, and and definitely if there was a case where it was any large expense, I would get board approval before moving forward with it.
Thank you, Rich. Any other questions on the motion? Clear and clear. All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Vote. That motion passes. Thank you. Second part of our HR is discussion and possible action on 2021 professional staffing baseline.
And this is Rich. Again, we will let Chris Tukendorf take the lead on on walking through this item with the board.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Rich, Carrie, and I are working on establishing procedures with regard to staffing and positions. And tonight, we are asking the board to first identify a baseline number of positions needed for the 2021 school year, and then later in the meeting, we'll be talking about contracts and how filling those positions based off of the memo that is in your board packet. It references specifically Board Policy 3111 for professional staff, and wanted to be able to put this for the board's review and possible recommendation. Is there any questions regarding the memo that I can answer for you?
I can try to add a little bit more color to it as well. So you'll see on the memo that teachers are at 257 and administrators and supervisors are at 24. From our meeting, my notes, these are the current counts from 2019-2020, so we're, it's basing it off of this last year. The reason why we wanted to do this is adding that clarity of what we're looking to fill moving forward. Everyone's on that same page. It's just that extra level of transparency and information for us to base our decisions moving forward. And then it gives something that if we need to add a position, we have procedures moving forward on how to do that and what, how how we would interact with that with both Rich, at Rich's level, and then at the board level. It's something that I think, Chris, you can correct me, but we had spoken to Shayna about what other districts do, or there's different ways to do this better, and Carrie brought some of this, some of her experience and her recommendations. And as Carrie kind of describes it, like there's pieces of a puzzle or how they go in line, and this is one of those things that kind of just fits into how we do things and why we do it, and and giving that clarity, I think that we've all been looking for over the last couple of years.
Absolutely, Diamond, and that offers that baseline. So once that is, that baseline is established for the upcoming year, any of those new positions, say, for example, a special, you know, there's a number of specialized students that move in or that have started attending Milton, and we need to add a teacher, that additional teacher would then be brought forward for the board's review and possible approval. So this memo is establishing that baseline. And to give you a little bit of a notice, the May 11th, we're looking at bringing forth a list for the support staff, and it'll be a very similar layout as this, looking for a recommendation and possible approval as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Once again, it's an action item, of course. Someone wants to bring that up.
I move that the number of professional staff positions listed above be the staffing baseline used for the 2020-2021 school year. Any additional positions not listed in the baseline will be subject to Board Policy 3111 and brought forward to the board for review and possible approval.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion being done, seconded by Ryan. We just get to improve our staffing, professional staffing baseline position number moving forward. Any other questions on that motion? Any none? All in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Vote. Thank you. That motion clearly passes.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the HR stuff. We will move into new business, and on cue is Mr. Ruggles. And we have letter A is discussion and possible action on instructional hours waiver for 2019-2020 that we alluded a little bit to earlier.
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Martin. I see Chris Tukendorf just left. I was going to tease him about wearing his ID at home. I didn't know if that was for Mandy or for the rest of us. So, Chris, if you can still hear me, I don't have my ID on, so. So I have a couple items here tonight. The the first two are pretty straightforward. I have two memos for waivers that have come about from the public health crisis, and as a, as a part of the the waiver process, we are required by the state to have a public hearing, and this school board meeting is allowed to serve as that public hearing. So Governor Evers issued Emergency Order Number 10, which directed the Wisconsin Department of Instruction, DPI, on several issues, among them, our instructional hours and our educator effectiveness. I'll speak first to the instructional hours waiver. And and first, I want to clarify that our teachers are doing an amazing job. They they are, they are working their tails off right now, and really, they have risen to the challenge, and they're doing some great work for our kids. So we have a lot to be proud of, and I will definitely share a little bit more about that in the in the virtual instruction update here after we talk about the waivers. But but really, this waiver is about a safety net and kind of an insurance policy, in that several things from the state were waived. They've already gone, the state has already gone forth and waived all standardized testing for the rest of the year, and they've done it for all the districts. They've, they're giving us a pass on the school report cards for next year, they're figuring out how to, how to talk about school improvement efforts from there. We're still waiting for some, some word on how that's going to look for next year. But one of the things that is waived within Emergency Order Number 10 is the instructional hour. And yes, you can say, we are doing some really good things, our kids are learning, and based on the the virtual learning plan that we had in place, we can count those hours. And based on everything that we planned in the fall, we had a team that started this virtual learning plan before we even had this pandemic. But the the rules are changed, and the games have changed a little bit. And now that we are fully doing virtual virtual learning, yes, we're getting the hours in, but the specific hours is is where it's gray. You know, the example I use in the memo is our human growth and development unit. You know, that is one of the things that is required. We know we're not going to get it in this year. We're getting a lot of literacy, we're getting a lot of math, that is, that has been our focus at the K6 level, and some of our specials aren't getting as much time because of that. It's for those reasons and for the the reasons for flexibility that it gives us now and going into next year that we want to apply for this waiver. In in talking with others, in Superintendent Diamond, talking with other area superintendents, myself, talking with other CNI directors from the area, you know, we wanted to make sure that we weren't the minority. Every, every district is seeking this waiver, again, for the same reasons that I outlined in the memo. So it just makes sense, but I also wanted to clarify that, yes, we are getting a lot of good instruction in, we're doing good work. Do I think it compares to what our teachers do in the classroom on a daily basis? Nope. We can't replace our teachers, they are phenomenal, but they are doing some really good work right now. What questions would you have for me? And and Rich, I, I think we have to open it up to the public as well as part of the public hearing, is that correct?
Ryan, in the earlier part of the meeting, we had the public hearing portion for both of the waivers, for both the the instructional hours waiver and the EE waiver, and we did not have any members of the public who who had requested to make any statements.
All right. Thank you. Any, any questions from the board? Otherwise, I think there's a recommendation within the waiver as well, the waiver memo?
I'll make a motion to authorize the administration to request a waiver from DPI of the minimum number of hours of instruction set forth in Wisconsin statute 101.02 sub one sub F for the 2019-20 school year due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency and the school closure orders.
I'll second it.
Thank you. A motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, I'm sorry, by Brian, to, what was it, Apple, to request a waiver for requirement for our minimum number of instructional hours. Are there any questions on that motion? Any none? All in favor, signify by saying hi.
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 That clearly has.
I have a complex now.
I'm just struggling with echoes and mics and weird parts. Mr. Ruggles on tap to the Board of B for a similar action here.
Excellent. Thank you. So the educator effectiveness waiver is of the same, comes from the same Emergency Order Number 10. Again, it is in response to the, to the public health crisis where Governor Evers has given us flexibility in how we do business. At this time, our hope is that we're able to finalize EE, which is educator effectiveness system, for all of our staff. That's our goal right now, but this, applying for this waiver is a safety net, and this one's a little bit different than the instructional hours in that, yes, we we do want to finish EE this year with our staff, that is our goal, we think, we think we can do that. But the guidance that we've gotten from CISA II, that the guidance that we've gotten from DPI, is that they want it to be a highly collaborative process, they want to make sure that we give staff the choice. And yes, we've gone through almost three-quarters of the year before we had to go virtual, so we had a chance, or we had lots of chances for observations, for teachers to have numbers with their administrators. So a lot of that work has been done already. But with that, DPI has has suggested and highly suggested that we give teachers the option and the choice if they feel ready and they they feel like there's enough evidence that they can move forward in their educator effectiveness cycle, that they can do that, they can move it to next year, or they can waive it, and then we can start a new cycle. Now, if we have just one teacher of of everyone that's in cycle in Milton requests a waiver, that means we need to do a waiver as a district. That, that's one of the kind of weird things of this all. So with that, we're trying to be proactive, and we want to come for permission for the waiver. Will we have to apply? We might, but right now, we want to make sure we have all of our ducks in the row. Our goal is to finish EE. We have a different approach to EE here in Milton, we have kind of a dual system, in that our our goals for EE in that our goals for EE in Milton has been about growth and reflection. It's been about very goal-driven. We didn't want it to be punitive any way. We want our teachers to set some high goals and, you know, push themselves for that and not have that attached to their formal evaluations. It's been a successful practice so far. It's been good. And because it is a grow and growth model, we think it just makes sense for us to ask you if we can apply for the waiver. And again, at this time, we may not need it, but we just wanna make sure that we're fully in compliance as well. And that's really what it comes down to for EE. We wanna make sure that we have everything right, that we're checking all the boxes. And, you know, compliance is important with all the stuff that's going on right now. So what questions would you have for me around the educator effectiveness waiver?
Ryan, I have a question. So the third option, if a teacher decides to waive the summative evaluation, it says that the evaluation cycle, a new cycle will begin in 2020-21.
Yep.
Does that mean they're skipping their summative year because it's a three-year cycle, correct?
Correct.
So they're gonna, they're just gonna skip their summative year and start all over, or they're just gonna do their summative year next year?
It would have, it would, depending on how much evidence we have, they might start the entire cycle over. Or they could go into that final summative year next year, depending on what they would have for evidence at the time. Yeah, and right now.
I said probationary teachers have, get a additional year put on then for their probation.
Can you say that again, please?
Probationary teachers who need to do that yearly and be evaluated yearly, will they have an extra year then put on there?
The waiver does not apply to brand-new teachers. We are still required to evaluate and use EE for all brand-new teachers.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? Someone realized that motion was suggested there.
I'll make a motion to authorize the administration to request a waiver of the requirement to complete an educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summative year in 2019-20, including waivers of the requirements to meet PI 8.01 and Wisconsin statute 115.415 and 121.021Q for the 2019-20 school year due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
I'll second it. Thank you. Motion for Mike, seconded by Chris, as he just heard. I think there's there. Any questions on that motion? Any? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion clears the panel. Hey, Mr. Ruggles, before we let you change into your red hot gear and give us an update on the virtual learning.
Well, I do have half my workout gear on already. You just can't see it, so.
We're gonna take your word for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the board a short update on virtual learning. And I would love to do this again at another time, once we have another month at this. And, because I think it's important that we highlight the work that we're doing here in Milton. I definitely wanna give a shout out to all of our teachers, our administrators. Our principals are doing amazing work right now. They really are. They're going above and beyond. And I can tell you, they are absolutely exhausted by the end of the week with everything they're putting in. I'd ask the principals to share some of the metrics with me in terms of attendance and in terms of how kids are engaging. And we use Schoology from a 412 standpoint to measure our metrics, to see percentage of kids that are turning assignments, that are logging in on a daily basis and engaging. And then from a K3 standpoint, our principals are sending a daily Google form, which basically says, my student participated in virtual learning for the day, or did not, or they're sick. And our parents at the K3 has been really wonderful about that. And our principals have been wonderful to send that every day. But it's been great because it's really shown us how much our kids are engaging on a regular basis. If I look over the last couple weeks, on any given day in the last two weeks in a variety of schools, our low student engagement was an 80% and our high student engagement was a 99% at one school. So you can see that we got some pretty high metrics there in terms of student engagement. As I talk with other CNI directors and other folks in the area, 80%, which was our low, would be high in many places right now. So really, our staff is doing an amazing job of engaging families and helping them get access when they didn't have access. And our kids are responding. They really are. We sent out a parent survey last week, just to get a gauge of where parents are at. Because really, what we wanted to know was, we saw the engagement. We know engagement was pretty good. But we wanted to get a feeling from the families how they're feeling about virtual instruction. About two-thirds of the families said what we were given for time and for homework was just about right. And then we also had, on the edges of that, we had some that said, give us more, and some give us less. You know, which tells us, I think, we're right about in the spot where we need to be. But we also need to be very mindful. And all the parent comments were a good reminder to this. We need to be mindful of both ends of the spectrum. We gotta make sure that we're kicking out good enrichment activities for those students that wanna do more and those families that have the ability to do more at the time. But we also need to be mindful of those parents that, you know, there's a great quote that I wanna share with everybody. It came from a parent that said, hey, my wife and I are both essential workers. We get home every day. We have family dinner from 5 till 6. And we're doing homework with our kids from 6 to 10 every single night. And it was a good reminder of just the circumstances that all of our families are facing right now. You know, I shared that out with the principals and it's, our goal is balance. Our goal is flexibility. And right now, in the phase of virtual learning that we're in, we're in a, our goal has been asynchronous learning, meaning we wanna make sure that we're giving out work that can be done on the time of the parents, on the time of the students, in trying to meet their needs as best we can in that manner. Now, we've started to do a little bit of synchronous in terms of just classes wanting to have some face time with each other. And I think as, the more that we've gone along and our kids are missing their friends, they're missing their teachers. So we're doing a little bit more of that, but the goal continuing will still be asynchronous learning through virtual. Now, we're getting set to talk about a next phase of virtual learning as we finish the year. On May 21st, which is a Thursday, we're looking at that being our last day of new content that we wanna deliver virtually. And as we talked as admin team, we wanna keep to the schedule that we have set already. So that would mean May 22nd is a PD day for staff already. So that'll be a non-instructional day for students. It's already built into our calendar. But from then, when our students come back from the long holiday weekend through June 4th, which is our last calendar day for students, our last calendar day for teachers is June 5th. So from the 26th of May through June 4th, we're gonna enter kind of a new phase of virtual learning in that it's gonna be a lot of remediation. There's gonna be a lot of skill building. And we're gonna build an even more social-emotional learning during that time as well. One of the comments that really, or not comments, but some of the feedback that we got from the parents, one of the things they're most concerned about is the social-emotional, how their students are doing from a social-emotional level. It's starting to take its toll, I think, on a lot of families. You know, we've had lots of conversations as a staff with our own children that we see the highs and lows every single day. So we wanna make sure that as we enter the summer, that that's a major focus for us in the last two weeks. And within that, our teachers will be given enrichment activities to help build those skills over those last two weeks. And since it's not new content, and our teachers won't have to be doing much for grading, we're hoping that that will give, we can free up some time for our teachers those last two weeks to really reach out to those kiddos that maybe struggled in the virtual environment, help us get set up some summer learning opportunities for those students, and really help us transition into the fall. Part of our goals those last two weeks of the year will be some PD and some, a lot of PLC time. Because we need to start talking about what that fall is gonna look like, whether or not we have a bunch of new faces in front of us with some wider gaps. Or if we're potentially doing this virtual thing at some point again next year, which I don't know, nobody wants to talk about, but we have to have that conversation and just be ready for Plan A and Plan B. That's been what we've shared with our admin team this entire time. What's our Plan A, Plan B, Plan C? Let's just be ready. Let's be ready with all those scenarios. So we wanna take those last two weeks of virtual learning time, again, not have new content for students, but just focus on those skills and get us ready to transition into the summer, so. Any questions that you guys have around how virtual learning has gone, or kind of our plan here as we're heading into the last couple weeks of the year?
Yeah, Ryan, Brian Quaple, yeah, I got a quick question. And before I ask it, I just wanna echo what you said. You know, I think the teachers are doing great. And, you know, they're definitely in a circumstance that none of us foresaw. But I think they're doing an outstanding job. The one question I would have, though, you know, the virtual learning at this degree and this magnitude is new. I mean, it's the first time we ever done it, the first pandemic, right? And even though things are going really well, and I think, you know, the teachers and the administration, support staff, everybody's doing a bang-up job. But, you know, since it's the first time, there's gonna be some hiccups. And I'm just wondering if you're documenting, like, lessons learned, like, what went well, what didn't? Just so in case we do have that second waiver, God forbid, a different pandemic, we can have a playbook to go to. And not only that, but we could also share best practices with other districts as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about the ups and downs over the last couple weeks. And we reached out to lots of other districts to see how things are going and have those conversations as well. You know, one of the things that we had to do early on is have some conversations as a staff about paring everything down. Because one thing we learn really fast, when you're trying to take things from a classroom and then put it into a virtual environment, from a time perspective, it just doesn't fit. And one of our colleagues had the analogy, take what you do and cut it in half, and then cut it in half again. And, you know, our staff has worked hard on mini lessons. And, you know, what mini lessons look like and how do you take big pieces of information and chunk it down into smaller manageable bits? And those have been some of the conversations we've had. And that's something that we'll have to get better at, you know. And again, our folks have done awesome and been forced to be awesome. But I think the talk of doing this again next year potentially is a strong possibility and it's a reality that we have to face. And we're gonna use time for this next month to really make that one of our focuses in the PLCs. And I will say, another thing that is happening right now, and our instructional coaches are really leading this practice, they're doing a deep dive into the essential standards. Because right now, if you looked at the ELAs, I'll just use ELA, the ELA standards for K12, it's a booklet and it's page after page after page after page. Our instructional coaches are doing a deep dive into those standards to say, what are the most important things that a third grader leaving Milton needs in order to be successful as a fourth grader? So they're having some really powerful conversations with our teachers around best practice and what we need to do different for next year, for sure. And I will say, we were planning to make virtual learning part of what we do. And we were originally approaching virtual learning from the standpoint of, we wanted to potentially build it into PD days or build it in as a way to recapture snow days, just a way to give us flexibility and schedule. And I think there's a place for virtual learning. There's a place for blended learning. But this has definitely forced us to be very outside of the box, that is for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ryan, has there been any adjustment to grading or how grades are gonna be reported?
Yeah, it's a little different at every single level. So we're still doing standards, standards-based at the, well, we're doing standards K5. And then it's meet standards or not assessed is what we're looking at. Because it's really not fair to say at this point, a student is not making standards right now when they haven't had a lot of opportunities to show what they know. And really, the guidance that we've gotten from DPI and CISA II around grading has been to to do that with grace and to give lots of, to give opportunities, but also just be careful from an equity lens of those that don't have access to someone to help them, you know, during the day. They might not have access to some of the enrichment opportunities per se. And because of that, just to be really mindful of that grading piece, you know. But it's also opened us up to have some really powerful grading conversations on the purpose of grading and the purpose of giving just good feedback. And really, that's what we wanna push with our teachers, is just making sure that you're giving good feedback to the students and the parents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Ryan. I have two questions. One being, how is DPI waiving all the standardized testing? How will that impact school report cards? And then the second with standardized testing, how is this going to impact juniors applying for colleges for next year?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I can start with the juniors right now. So we were able to get in our ACT. That was good. So, and Tara Huber did an awesome job. We had a couple kids that had to do makeup tests. And she got them in that week, right before, right before we started virtual learning. So great job to the high school team on that. So our juniors are good. Our juniors got the ACT in. It was everyone else from a 3-8 perspective that they had their standardized testing waiver this year. As for how that will impact the report cards, we know that we're having to pass on the report cards next year. They haven't said what they're gonna do at this place. I would assume that it's gonna be something, but they haven't showed exactly how that's gonna look yet. And, you know, the analogy we used today on one of our plans was, we're kinda in the air and we're building the landing gears as we're in the air. And I think that's the situation that they're in with report card and lots of other things right now. You know, unfortunately, I think, I think several of our schools were doing really good work this year that selfishly, I wouldn't like to see us have to report cards, because I think we would have did really darn good, so.
I would agree.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Ruggles? Very good. Thanks for the update, Ryan.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I'll second.
Is that better? I'll repeat, then, with no questions on the staff report, all in favor of approving it as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. And gifts and donations, our letter B, have a total of $489.64 for donations.
I'll make a motion to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Rick, to approve our donation from our generous community. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes also. We are grateful for the donations. And let us see our upcoming board and committee meeting dates. Are we aware of this?
We will need to schedule an HR committee meeting, and hopefully for sometime this week or the early part of next week. Right now, as mentioned earlier, Diamond is the only remaining member of the HR committee until the board takes action on naming the new committees for this year. So that makes scheduling a little bit easier, because there's only one member, but it's not an ideal committee, obviously. And I'm not sure how the board wants to address that, or, or what thoughts, Diamond. I don't know if you have thoughts on, on that, or if we want to appoint someone to join that group for the time being, until we have a full committee?
Mr. President, I would suggest maybe you being part of that committee until we do read committee assignments in order to have this meeting?
Yeah, I'd be willing to, and I'm pretty up to speed on most of what's going on. So if the board's okay, I can, I'll sit into that meeting with the admin folks for the, what they need to accomplish. So, all right, I'll do that. Do you want to set a date now? I'm pretty wide open.
Diamond, do you have, do you know what your calendar looks like at the end of this week?
Tomorrow's a really busy day, but outside of that, I should be able to make about any day work.
What's your preference, Rich? Do you want to do it at the end of this week? Do you want to do it next week?
Chris Tuchendorf, does it matter if we, we do it the end of this week or the early part of next week? Is there a timeline that we need to meet with that group?
No, sir. There's no specific timeline. It would just be starting to talk about other groups that we want to bring forth on May 11th.
Would the 30th work for everyone?
I have a couple windows on, on Thursday, the 30th, that would work for me. Late morning would work, or after 4:00 PM on the 30th would work for me.
Late morning would be my preference.
I can make late morning work as well.
We do 11 o'clock on Thursday, the 30th?
Yes.
Yep, that's a goal.
All right. Thank you. And I don't think at this time, we need to schedule any other committee meetings. When the board takes action on May 11th to set the committees for the coming year. When, when the committees are appointed on May 11th for the coming year, then we'll, we'll likely get some setup at that point to, to bring the new committee members up to speed on the, on the committee work and move forward with those groups.
Okay. That takes care of our regular portion of our agenda. We have scheduled an executive session tonight, and I will read the language present to that, and then we'll need a motion to that effect, and we'll vote on that. So looking for a motion to an executive session, subject to Wisconsin statute 1925, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this will be relative to the 2019-2020 administrator compensation in 2021, teacher supervisor and administrator contracts.
So move.
Thank you. Moved by Diamond, seconded by Rick, as I just outlined. We will vote that, I'll just scroll around the room here. Shelley, is it yes? Diamond?
Yes.
Is it yes, Rick?
Yes.
Is it yes, Mike?
Yes.
Is it Ryan? And Joe is yes. So that is six to zero. We are in executive session. We will not be online for the executive portion, as all of us are on site. So you can. Okay, we'll join the executive link if it.
Yeah, we'll need to close out of this meeting, join the executive session, and then come back into this meeting after the executive session if we're going to take any action based on the executive session. We do have a agenda item seven from our regular meeting, a possible action from any of the executive session items.